We'll invite Deanna to limp to the podium and
We'll get there.
Bring the occasion.
Let's pray. Father, I thank you for this evening. I just want to bring honor to the council members, to the mayor, to the ladies upstairs, the Department of Public Works, and to our police officers. Father, they make the city here just hum perfect, Father. And yes, there is bumps in the road, but man, everything is being accomplished. I thank you for that, Martin. May tonight be a good night that we all work together for the best of the community. We just thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Yeah, yeah. Anytime. No, Minnie's not. Her husband's had some issues. She called me just to thank for being here tonight. Apologize for short moments, but she will not be here. It's seven o'clock by the clock on the wall, so we'll use that one and call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Legits. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take roll copies?
Mike Connell?
Here.
Chad Fuller?
Here.
Megan Galbey?
Lori Lambert?
Here.
Bob Porter?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. And I'd like to thank our new deputy clerk Shirley for filling in tonight. Thank you Shirley for doing that. Looking now for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per my.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now looking for reading and approval of the minutes of the April 6th meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the April 6th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any pre-approved reports or presentations for tonight, so we'll move on to comments from the public. Is anyone here to make public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications. I believe Shirley has some for us.
Sure do. So our custodian Deborah, she has given her notice and she will, that May 18th will be her last day. So we have posted position, same thing, part-time position, and that's posted on our door, on our website and on Facebook. The other thing is I did give you guys the flyer for the cleanup week. Everybody saw it. And we have communications from the mayor, from the Perry Historical Society. And the last thing is communication from the attorney.
Moving on to mayor reports. I do have a communication from the Perry Historical Society. Terry Shansky contacted me and asked me to extend invitation to all of you, which I sent out by email, but just in case you didn't get that email. Their Historical Society is having an outdoor event at the McQueen House, May 7th, from 4:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, that will include a concert by the Perry High School Band and ice cream. And you're all welcome to attend. And Megan made these really nice flyers, so if anybody needs one, did you guys get one? Hmm. Look, Chad, could you take one over to Deanna?
Very good.
Oh, I wanted to tell her, well, you get the special color one.
All righty.
But it just talks about how the
Thank you.
citywide cleanup will be handled this year. It will not be curbside like it has been in the past. And it's explained on the website, on the flyers that are available on Facebook. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call. We're happy to explain if it's not clear how that will work. I think it will be real good. We're going to have the 30-yard dumpsters available for two weeks, so you'll be able to take stuff there. And the hours are on the flyer when they'll be available to be used.
Sue, can you remind me when the community garage sale is?
It is May 19th, 20th, 21st.
Thank you.
And there is a spot, well, we were talking about that. There is a spot on the city website to go ahead and sign up for that if you want to participate. Name, address, et cetera.
You just click on, click on that and it takes you right to a form that you can fill out right online. And it'll register you, your address. And then we'll have a list of where all the yard sale locations are available for people to see.
Thank you.
The light installation for the new light at the corner of Main Street and Second Street is now scheduled for the first week of May. How about that? The consumers did come and mark the spot. Kevin went down and supervised and made sure that that was good. And they told us they'll be here the first week of May to install that. The other thing on my list is... Oh, that, never mind. We crossed that off because we asked Devon, we can't do that. So that is all that I have to report. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Just let everyone know that the ordinance committee will be meeting next Thursday, April the 27th at 10:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers. Unfortunately, we had to reschedule from our previously scheduled 4:13 meeting. So that's the reason we got another one coming up so quickly, next Thursday, the 22nd.
And that's at 10:00 a.m., right?
Correct.
Yep. Any other committees to report?
Just a reminder, we do have the parks meeting here at Council Chambers on Monday, the 24th at 6:00 p.m.
We can move now, I believe, any other committees to report? I'm sorry. We can move now to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and the payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any items under old business, so we'll move right on to new business. And in regard to the mayor's appointment, this is to the building authority. And this has traditionally been a position filled by our city treasurer. And Megan has agreed to continue to serve in that position. So I am reappointing her to that and look for your approval of that appointment.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Megan Galbry to the building authority for the term to expire May of 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to our discussion of the possible approval of the mutual aid for the village of Bancroft. And Kevin is here tonight to address any questions or concerns you might have. And I'll let him just go ahead and explain about this.
We talked before that the village of Bancroft has requested help during their water tower project. The crew is on site and they've begun work on the exterior. So they're kind of moving ahead. And they would really appreciate our help with this project. Limited manpower and resources, just kind of as needed. Doing a little bit of routine checks just to make sure everything's working the way that it's supposed to. And we don't run into any major problems during the project that consume a lot of our manpower and time. A little bit, you know, pay it in, need a little bit better results. So I think that Megan and I come up with a pretty good cross summary to be able to assist them. If we approve it here tonight, then they're going to hold a special meeting to get it approved on their end so that we can begin helping them as needed right away. So that's all I have. And if anyone has any questions, I can take those now.
I have just a question, Kevin. Obviously, the start time would be almost immediately. Any idea the length of the project for them?
They have a scheduled contract, which I believe is 45 days. But if they run into issues like we did with ours, you're all very familiar with how this process works, so.
A couple ones?
Yeah, tops.
I have talked to the village president a couple times. I did send him a copy of this mutual aid agreement that Justin prepared. And he called. Was it this morning?
Yesterday.
Yesterday morning, he called and just had a couple little clarifying questions. He talked with Kevin also. And pretty much said that, that once we decide if we are going to agree to this mutual aid agreement, that they will then hold a special meeting.
I know you don't know what you don't know right now. It may come up, but do you foresee any conflict in your time or time of any of your employees with the, if we embark on this agreement?
I don't, I don't see it as being overly extensive as far as manpower and time goes. Probably start out for the first week or so, checking things out daily, just to kind of get a feel for it. And then we'll probably switch to every other day kind of a thing. And it's at our schedule, our leisure. When we're available, we can go. Hopefully, it becomes a routine and just works into the schedule nicely. If it becomes a burden or a problem, then we'll ask them to seek alternate means to fulfill their need.
It seems like in a contract, it's pretty easy to get out of it. Even right now, as you're running on something, if you're going to go.
Exactly.
I'd like to see an X, I know we don't have
If we deem it as not feasible.
Yeah. So it's good we can get out of it, but you do.
And it very clearly says that in case of an emergency here, that will preclude any aid to Bancroft.
Correct.
So Perry will take priority.
I see. But what equipment may you be renting to them?
For starters, it'll just be a pickup truck to and from. Once we get there, we will utilize their equipment.
Okay.
If there's a need for our back truck, we would take that over to do a repair or whatever, however that would become useful. But beyond that, I don't anticipate hauling a bunch of stuff back and forth. We don't have the time to be doing that. I mean, they're pretty
That's why I asked.
They have a fully functional department there, there's just no one there to do the work, so.
That's why I asked, I figured they have their own stuff, why are we?
Yeah, we just included that so we could charge for the truck
Just in case.
to and from. Yeah.
Any other discussion from council or questions for Kevin?
I move that we approve the mutual aid agreement between the City of Perry and the village of Bancroft and authorize Mayor Soonham and the authority to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, have a good evening.
Appreciate you being here. Let me sign this one, or will you have a special one? All right. Next on our agenda is discussion on health insurance. And we were waiting, last I knew, for Micah's update. He's our person.
Yeah.
Have we gotten that yet?
We have not gotten that yet, but this can go to the May 4th meeting. Can go one more meeting if you guys want me to just do that.
Well, I don't think we have anybody here who feels qualified to answer any questions about that employee's health insurance. So I think we will do no action taken and move it to the next meeting. And I see Tom, our county commissioner, come in. Did you want to speak to us? We can back up and have you do that if you'd like.
Sure. I don't have a lot to say. I just came from where our meeting tonight. The, nothing of any great moment dealt with recently. But I mainly wanted to be here. And if you ever have any issues that are concerned, that pertain to the county, I would like to hear about it. And I'm available for you to let me know. I just would, there's one thing. I'm on the Public Safety Committee in the courts, in the Public Safety Committee. And there is an issue, and I don't know that it's going to be in the immediacy to it, but there is a case in the state Supreme Court that has to do with the question of whether judges who fund the court with costs that they assess against defendants. And there has been a court ruling questioning the constitutionality of that. Well, on a statewide, the Michigan Association of Counties has been looking into it. I've had privy to some of their information. Up to a quarter of the funding for the courts. Of course, that falls in our area jurisdiction. It does come from these costs, and that could be a significant thing. Trying to predict what a court, especially the Supreme Court's going to rule on anything like that is very difficult to do. So we don't know how immediate, depends on how immediate the court wants to be with that. But so I just would let you know that that is something that's kind of lurking in the background. It could be an impact on the operation of our courts here in the county. And but other than that, just want to let you know that I'm available if you do have any concerns or issues you want to bring up the house, sit around and listen, try and see what's going on here in the city.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions for Tom? Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Moving back into our agenda then, our next item is a discussion referring the police department funding to a committee. At one point in time this last fall, Steve Wallace, Mike Connell, myself, and Kyle Boggs, our police chief, did meet with representatives from the village of Morris to look at the possibility of beneficial merger. And we did travel over to Schwartz Creek and met with the police chief over there because they had done a merger. And so he gave us a lot of information, answered a lot of our questions. And then we, I don't know, we probably had four or five meetings and finally determined that a merger at that point in time was not going to be beneficial to either municipality. So we basically said, let's revisit the, maybe in a year, and just see if things are still the same or where we're at. But in the meanwhile, it's come to my attention through our Michigan Municipal League magazine that we are now, municipality to the size that we are, allowed to fund, or at least partially fund, our police department with a special assessment. Until recently, that was not a thing that we could have done. So I sent the information out to all of you. And I'm wondering if we could discuss the possibility of appointing the same people, if they're willing to do it, to a committee to look into that, to see how realistic that might be for helping to fund our police department. So open for discussion.
I'm willing to do it.
Okay, thank you.
As am I.
Okay, thank you. I already asked Kyle and he said yes. And I am.
As I said last meeting, I'm concerned that all we're doing is adding another fee or tax to the citizens but not getting any reduction. So we're going to, we already pay quite a bit of tax in the city, so, you know, where are we going to be at? It's just.
This is, and I, and I know it's just
I know it's just discussion.
I don't mean to be picky, but this is not a tax. So let's get in the habit of calling it
It's a fee.
a special assessment.
It's a fee.
It's a special assessment, it's not a tax, because it's treated differently. And I just don't want people to
Okay, that's, we're going to split hairs for that one, but that's okay. Special assessment.
Yeah.
Call whatever you want. I still, it's, we need to make sure, I do, I should say. I need to see that we really lead everything we have in the police department for extra money. Do we need an extra police officer? Right now, it's about, it's a third of our total budget, roughly. And we're about 3% over budget right now, or anyway, it is right now, roughly. And I think there's an extra, or a new policeman officer in the budget.
It's in the budget, yes.
Okay, so that's roughly the 3% that we're over.
Yeah.
We're a small city. Can we, can we really afford to have the size of this part of the not just another way to fund it? What's the saying, call whatever you want, it's still a fee from somebody else. Citizens are still paying.
And my, my thought would be that this committee, when they bring their report back to you, would include that information in their report as best as we can say. My concern about only having the number that we have now is, came very apparent to me when I first became mayor, Tom Royal had COVID and was in the hospital for six months. So all of a sudden, we don't have four anymore.
I understand that, but do we have, and I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
I have no, I took, I talked to Steve the other day and I took a step back from our discussion. Do we, do we have the volume, and I'm just throwing out words, don't take the words exactly how I'm saying. Do we have the call volume to justify the police force that we have? Do we, you know, is there lots of calls, they go on? And I don't know, because we don't see a police report or a police run report. I don't know, I have no idea. They could be going every five minutes having a call. I have no idea. So do they have enough runs, are they overwhelmed in a sense to justify that? And it's just a lot of money. And it's probably average, the three, a third of the net overall budget. I don't know.
I guess overall average. For Public Safety, like a third is below.
All right, well, we have one and a half million dollar budget and we're spending $500,000 in the police department. And we have a lot of, we have a lot of legacy cost, but there's lots of money. Everyone's paying more and more fees. We're going to start driving people away. That's all. I just want the committee to hear my opinion
And that is
and really seriously look at it.
That is certainly your opinion. And you have a very strong opinion.
I know.
And your voice is very well heard. And I want to just respond to that. I don't think we're going to drive people away. People come here for many other reasons other than inadequate police force.
No, I wasn't talking about police. I was talking about the fees that we pay.
Well.
So taxes, assessments, all those things. There is a general consensus when, people are shocked, I should say, when they move here and they're told by their real estate agent one thing and then they get their bill. So it's, we can't not look at that. That's all.
It is a big shock when your purchase price uncaps and your realtor hasn't been responsible enough to tell them that it will uncap. And so your new tax will be based on
And I'm not talking for myself. I do that, that's not the first house I've purchased. So I understand all those rules. It's just, I have to really think a lot.
Yeah, and I think that's all good stuff. So we would like to have our committee, who's looking into this, not only look into the funding, but the need.
Yes.
And to gather information in regard to
That's a good summary, thank you.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Chad? Anything, Larry?
Yep. Good.
Okay. So we'll set up a meeting time for this committee and meet as long as we need to. So we'll set up a meeting time for this committee and meet, as long as we need to, be it six months, two months, three months, a year, whatever we take. And we'll bring the reports back as we have information to report back on. So thank you, Mike and Steve and Kyle, for serving on that committee. We'll move into another discussion regarding special assessment and this is in regard to the ambulance. I'm sorry. Oh, the council has to approve our committee. Well, the committee was already formed, but it certainly won't hurt to have council approve our committee. So let's do that.
I move that we refer police department funding to the committee. Who's recommendation?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mike, seconded by Larry. And you had a blank in here. Was this to have a date? Oh, okay. Police Department Funding Committee. Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And once again, thank you. So now moving into the next discussion, which is in regard to the CISA letter that came out to the city. I believe all of you got a copy of that letter by my email forwarding that on. And CISA has done a lot of research on what they need to do to keep the emergency services viable, not only for the city of Perry, but for all the municipalities they serve. How many is that, Bob? Is that 10? They serve 10 municipalities?
There may be 12 total, but I know there's 10 for sure.
And so their request for special assessment increase is to take it from the $65 that it is now to the $110 that they're requesting. And the way that the special assessment works in the city of Perry, and it works a little different in almost every municipality, the townships, the village, the city of Duran does theirs differently. So, but the way that it works for the city of Perry is as a special assessment, if we are only going to increase it 10%, the council has authority to do that with a vote and it is just done. The, typically, the bill for the special assessment goes on the summer tax bill. So if we were to vote tonight after discussion that we were going to increase the assessment by 10%, then that would start on the summer tax bill and it would allow us to increase what we're paying to CISA, although obviously 10% of $65 is nowhere near $110 per household. But it would allow us to at least increase a little bit because we have to have a public hearing to go higher than 10%. We have to create a new special assessment district and we have to determine what the property values are within that district in order to achieve $110 per household assessment and so forth. So it's a process that takes about three months. And we could, if we decide to go this route, then move ahead to further discussion to create the special assessment district, have public hearing to determine if we do move ahead to agree to the $110 per household. And if we do agree to do that, then we can put the difference on our winter tax bill. Then we would be relieving the pain somewhat by not having all of our special assessments on the summer tax bill. So if we put that balance of the special assessment to achieve $110 per household on the winter bill for this year, we would also need to decide, are we going to leave it like that? Would we continue to bill it on the winter tax bill? Or would we move it back into the summer tax bill? Or would we do part of it in one tax bill and part of it in the other tax bill? So I mean, those are our options. Those are the things we need to decide if indeed we do move into the creation of a new special assessment district to achieve the balance of this $110. So now I quit talking and you can go ahead and discussion. Open for discussion.
Bob, are all the other participants right now at CISA at the $65?
Everybody pays $65. Even Duran, even though they do a, they do a household assessment or a millage, thank you. It's almost 65. It's, it's right in there. It may be a couple pennies more or less. Depends on the value of your loss. But everybody right now is 65.
Can I just interject? Some of them do it, do accomplish it differently, but they're all at 65. I think Perry Township, and Tom, you could help me with this maybe, I think Perry Township bills a portion of that to the residents and then the township pays a portion of it.
They were picky, yes, exactly. They were, when it went up from 45 to 65, they kept to the residents at 45 and the general fund taped up the other 20. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
But there, everyone has been presented with the CISA thing. I think there's one they were trying to give to you this week or next week, to the two.
I think they got to all of them now. I talked to Tim on the phone yesterday.
Okay, so they're working on it. Some of them are more pressing than others, but we want everyone to be on the same page. And there's some questions that came up about the park, you know, they have the seasonal park things. We made the decision as a board to vote, charge those spaces fully because in the past they've gotten discounts. So I know that was a question that came up from new firms. But the 110, that is, that's our bare minimum to provide the services that we have to everyone right now. It is, it's going to have to go up in small increments every year, a certain percentage. I don't exactly what that is, but it's less than a 10% we're hoping and thinking. But it's, you know, to have that service, that's where we need to be at.
I did talk to Tim, our other representative to the CISA board, and he's been assisting with those presentations. And he said to me, everybody is on board with this now.
It's been very well received.
Yeah.
Very minimal questioning, just clarifications and their questions. It wasn't really any real pushback. I think everybody understands the situation that we're in with the inflation and everything going up and just what we have. So we have older equipment we're trying to replace and just, and that's just the ambulance.
Yeah, that's just the ambulance.
But we did get a new, new used ambulance that's in service, I believe. Isn't it right? It's not in service yet? So it's a used one that's newer than some of our other ones and it has a little mileage. We got a pretty decent deal on it. So we're trying to do some things.
We have it, it's just not.
We have it, right. And I did, I voted against it because I didn't know where our money situation was. So everyone knows that's where I stood with it. So that was the only reason, I needed to know where the money's coming from.
The last meeting that I went to, a CISA meeting a couple of months ago, there was some concern about two municipalities, their representatives expressed concern that that would not, this 110 would not pass in their municipality. I mean, they flat out said, that won't fly. So I asked him that on the phone yesterday and he said, they're on board with that. They understand. After the presentation, they understand what's needed and why it's needed to keep the services where they are right now. So if we do move ahead into establishing a new special assessment district to achieve the balance of this money, they would come back and do that presentation again. We would have public hearing and so forth. We'd go through the whole process. So we'd need to probably start it though in September to have it done in time, if indeed it moves ahead to have it on the winter tax bill.
We hope, as a board, we hope to have all that information, all knowing everyone's at June or July. That's right now the kind of consensus, so.
If we do elect to raise it to 10% here that we're talking about, recommend 650, but nonetheless, Bob, your earlier point, it is another increase and on the heels of that, we're going to come along and talk about a much bigger increase to get to 110 here in the next few months.
Yep.
Are we, how do we communicate to the people to say that this is 10% now is a little piece of where we actually need to get? Or are we going to be back in three, four months, five months, six months and say now we really need to step up? Or are we going to just wait and do the 110 and educate the people one time? I'm just raising the question.
That's one way to do it. The 10%, the $650 is going to go to, will help a small amount of CISA, not much. But it is showing people that we're trying to go along with this. And to your point, yes, we have to educate people and if they can come to the CISA boards, they're open, anybody who wants to come. I'm sure if they want to reach out to me, I'll make sure they get a copy of this stuff so they know where we're at.
Yeah, I think when we do the public hearing for the one to get to 110, we've got an education plan.
Correct.
I'm just questioning whether or not we do, granted it's just 650, but some people through the state now are going to come along and try to give much more. I understand that 650 times whatever number of people is some additional funds for CISA right now.
I don't know what other municipalities are doing with their, right, their right raising of the 10% or not, or they're voting on that. I have no issue with doing it either way, honestly. It's not, the 650 times however many households we have here isn't going to be a whole lot.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. And this is a all or nothing, correct?
That's what the attitude is, yes.
All the municipalities.
All the municipalities or not.
Exactly, yes.
If, if we have a municipality who is adamant of not raising it to 110, then we will look at it and see what we can do. Because if we don't have all of them on board that 110, say one drops off, we can't fund it at 110. That changes all the numbers.
Well, it depends on the size of the one who drops off.
No, it changes all the numbers. The 110 is, that was, and you may have been at that meeting when I argued pretty loudly, which I do have a loud voice, I know that.
Yeah.
But that is the, in my opinion, there really should be more. This is bare minimum. This is a, if anything happens that is not projected, it could be very harmful with the money on, even at 110. So it's tight for that. The 110 is going to be tight for two, two and a half years. Then we can start funding again and buying, saving like we did and financing minimal amounts towards new stuff and we have a bank account to pay for some of it. So it's unfortunate, just like the city is, you know, the same thing. We just don't have enough money.
My thought with doing the 10% now, Larry, was because if it doesn't, the new special assessment district doesn't get created and we don't agree to go to the 110 or other municipalities don't agree to go to the 110, then it's all got to be rejuggled around and who knows how long that'll take. We might be back around to next spring before we're addressing anything. So at least we've achieved.
Right.
The increase that's allowed.
I think it's putting your best foot forward too.
Yeah.
I think it's putting your best foot forward too, showing that you're on board with it by, I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying I think it looks good.
I'm on board with doing it. My concern is that we in some fashion communicate in advance of the summer tax bill what the broader plan may be, that you're going to hear more about additional needs that are there, is we want to have the public hearings and all of that by the time the summer taxes go off.
I agree.
The awareness that this is directionally where CISA needs to be, but there's a lot more to come.
Right, I see your point. People are, I just, I just paid the rate. Now they want more.
Exactly.
You can say it until you're blue to fit and they're not going to hear it. They're going to hit 65 or 72, whatever it comes up to be. They're not going to hear the 110. Everybody hears the lower number.
And I think communication and being very transparent with the process is so important.
That's my only point.
I did in the monthly letter that I put out, probably, I'm the only person who knows what it said. Well, Megan knows because she's the one who posted, but not everybody looks at it is what I'm trying to say. But my April 1st letter was concerning this, was concerning the ambulance assessment and it explains what that is because many people, especially new homeowners, have no clue what that is or why it's there. And I did include a quote from the letter that came from CISA asking for the 110 and just touched on the surface that one small increase and then another increase maybe forthcoming and just said at the end, more information will be forthcoming. So I think we would probably need to do a mailing, not something in a place where nobody ever sees it anyway, but an actual mailing, not that they read them when they come in the mail, but make every effort that we can to get it to them, to explain what we're doing and what we're looking at possibly doing and why we're doing it, even including a copy of CISA's letter, you know, to do as much as we can to educate and inform.
That's my only point.
Yeah.
At least there's one more person that does read your, your letters.
Oh, I know, Linda reads it because she checks my spelling and stuff. And that's good. I'm glad she's on board with that. Other discussion about that?
I move that we support the CISA recommendation to increase annual and special assessment district to 10% for summer taxes 2023.
Now, I'm not sure if this has to have a roll call. Did you happen to ask that?
I did, but we can't.
Let's just do it. Probably better to do one than not. So Deputy Clerk Smith, would you please take a roll call?
Mindy Galaby, Mike Connell.
Yes.
Mary Lambert.
Yes.
Bob Porter.
Yes.
Steve Wallace.
Yes.
Chad Fuller.
Yes.
Motion passes. So we should create communication, starting to get that out with a letter that talks about this next process, if indeed, I'm hearing you say that you do want to move ahead with looking at the creation of a new special assessment district.
If all the other municipalities are on board.
Correct, and that would definitely be required. And I think they're all saying the same thing, but yes, definitely.
Yes, that, that comment did come up at the last sesame. We need to know where everyone stands because everyone is kind of waiting and almost taking the first step.
So we will put on the agenda for our next meeting, further discussion regarding creation of a new special assessment district. And communication to the public regarding this. Okay, now I, any further discussion on, on that topic at all? We'll move into our next agenda item, which we actually can't move into. If you would each take one of these and just read that. This came from our city attorney today. He had called me, he had emailed me regarding this subject and the subject is the one that we have to go into closed session to discuss, so we will not be discussing it here today. If you'll just read the letter and understand that in regard to possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment 379 and number 380, we cannot act on either of those tonight. We are allowed to do a note, action taken on those tonight and as we hear more from the attorney, we'll know more about taking action in the future. we'll know more about taking action in the future. So that moves us into discussion concerning potential master plan update assistance. Larry, do you wanna take that?
Sure, yeah. I think I hear a while back, and some conversation here with regard to the fact that Planning Commission was looking at potentially enlisting a contract service to help with the update of the city's master plan. To that end, we have gone out with Megan's assistance to request RFQs or RFPs, we went up to four different companies, three did respond back this past week with, with quotes. The Planning Commission held a special meeting to review that information on Monday. We do have a front runner that we are going to be meeting with at our regularly scheduled meeting on the 1st of May and would encourage all council members that can attend to, to come in and, and listen to that, that discussion, that's at 7 o'clock in May 1, here in, in council chambers. We do have quite a range of estimates, from a low of about $25,000 in assistance to a high of about $57,000, $58,000 and a little bit of spread in between with the three that have, have come back. Like I say, we will be meeting with the one just to make certain that we understand the details, ask questions, et cetera, and if all goes well, hopefully we can come forward probably and have it on our next agenda for actually taking some action and potentially a decision. Megan has been in contact with the RRC representatives and they are in support of the person or the company that we're looking at, and obviously we need to have them on board, because we are, just as a reminder, going to be looking for some RRC grant funding to help support the efforts of our rewrite. Comments, questions? We're getting close.
How many, how many people did you get back there?
Three, three out of four. Oh, that's good.
Any other discussion regarding that master plan update? Thank you, Larry. Any other business that may come before council this evening? Any people that would like to make public comment at this time?
I wonder if the chair would indulge, be an additional, maybe 20 seconds, something I should have mentioned, just a reminder that this Saturday in Duran is the Shawasi County Health Department is running that household hazardous waste collection. And it is a significant matter to get somebody's household hazardous waste turned in, it's a, it's a good way to deal, if you've been storing stuff around the house and afraid to dump it in the environment, which is awfully true, that is going to be this Saturday, Duran City Hall, 8 until noon.
Is that a flyer that you could let me have or let us copy?
Certainly.
And then Megan could post that on our website and wherever she thinks it should go.
Presumably, if you've gotten something previous, the health department has been-
Yeah, they haven't given us anything this year.
They have. They should.
What's that?
The needs on Shawasi Health Facebook post.
It's also DEA medication collection things, there may be court conjunction, conjunction with that, I don't know.
Usually is.
And I've been hearing on the radio all day, every day about-
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective. Any council discussion or observations? Any agenda items other than those we've already mentioned that we should give to At 7:52, this meeting is now adjourned.